Thank you, Lou.
There's roses. Beautiful roses.
Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of March 13, 2012. First of all, as we always do, thank the San Bruno Garden Club for the arrangement they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
City Attorney, would you leave us in place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, we do have a few announcements this evening. The annual Pancake Breakfast in East Ray County will be held March 31, 9 to 11 at San Bruno City Park. And I also happen to know, because I'm going to be involved, that 11 o'clock is the opening of the Dewey's, I believe.
Yes.
At the Diamond Number Two, so if you're welcome to attend that also. Couple of other announcements. We are initiating the San Bruno Library Homework Center. On January 30, the San Bruno Library opened a new Homework Center program that is free of charge and open to students in grades K through eight in the lower level of the library, which is now open. The center is open on school days until 6:00 PM and provides computers, access to online tutoring, and an atmosphere conducive to studying. If you're interested in volunteering or would like more information about the Homework Center, please visit the library or call the library staff at (616) 7078. And we do have some volunteer flyers and more information in the back of the room. Also, I'd like to announce, if you haven't already heard, that the City of San Bruno and PG&E have reached an agreement on community restitution. Yesterday, the City of San Bruno announced the completion of negotiations with Pacific Gas and Electric Company to provide restitution to the City of San Bruno and the San Bruno community to address the impacts of the September 9, 2010, pipeline explosion and fire. Through the settlement agreement, PG&E has agreed to pay the City of San Bruno $70 million in restitution to support the city and community efforts to recover from the pipeline tragedy. The money will be used for the benefit of all San Bruno citizens and to help the community get beyond the tragedy and devastation caused by PG&E's explosion and fire. The $70 million payment is to be made by mid-April. With this money, the city will establish a separate, not-for-profit, purpose entity to manage the funds and determine how the restitution should be spent for the benefit of the community as a whole. The payment is in addition to the fund established to pay for the replacement and repair of the city's infrastructure and other costs related to the accident and restoration of the neighborhood. Over the next several months, as the city moves forward, we will be seeking input from residents. Watch the city's website and future focus newsletters to learn how you can stay informed and participate in this important and very exciting process. We have a couple of presentations. The first one is a presentation I would like to present to some very dear friends of ours over the last 18 months and before. The Berry Chapter Volunteers of the American Red Cross Recognizing American Red Cross Month 2012. Most of these, we sort of go over lightly, but I'm going to read all of this because it's very important to us. Declaring March as American Red Cross Month, whereas the American Red Cross has touched many lives in San Bruno, as well as across the country and around the world, and whereas during American Red Cross Month, we thank those who contribute to the mission of the Red Cross, whether through time, money, or blood, and we invite others to support the Red Cross in helping people in need. And whereas the American Red Cross is synonymous with helping people and has been doing so for more than 130 years. Throughout the past year, the American Red Cross launched hundreds of disaster relief operations in the United States to help people affected by fires, floods, hurricanes, and tornadoes. The American Red Cross has also supported major international disasters, including the Japan earthquake and tsunami response, while continuing its work on the 2010 Haiti earthquake response and recovery. And whereas in San Bruno, the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter works tirelessly through its nearly 1,000 volunteers to support us when disaster strikes, when someone needs life-saving blood, or the comfort of a helping hand. It provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and provides training in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. And whereas the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter helped over 1,405 people with temporary housing, clothing, food, and mental health counseling during 392 local disasters last year alone, trained over 117,345 people in life-saving CPR, first aid, and water safety, and over 173,555 individuals received preparedness training, provided emergency communications, counseling, financial assistance, and a caring presence to over 1,810 local military families, and supported 31 Bay Area hospitals, providing them with nearly 150,000 units of red cells, platelets, and plasma to patients in need. And now therefore, I, Jim Ruane, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim March 2012 as American Red Cross Month, and I encourage all Americans to support this organization in its noble humanitarian mission. And I'd like to present this. Thank you.
I think I'll wait until he gets back to the front there. So, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Amy Lang. I'm Chair of the San Mateo County Leadership Council here in the Bay Area Chapter. I'm here today actually with a few other volunteers and staff from the Red Cross. And I want to say, on behalf of the Red Cross and the volunteers and the staff, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor Ruane and fellow council members. When we talk about all the disaster relief efforts and responding, I wanted to actually also talk a little bit about the preparedness efforts that we are involved in. There's some events coming up that I wanted to make sure you folks were aware of. We have what we're calling Save a Life Saturday coming up on Saturday, April 14. So this is formerly known as CPR Saturday. It's taking place at the Martin Luther King's Junior Center in San Mateo, as well as East Palatal Boys and Girls Club. And next week, we're actually having a Train the Trainer session for Save a Life Saturday on March 21st. So if you're interested in any of those, please go to redcrossbayarea.org and sign up for or to just get more information. A little further down the road, we have the Heroes Breakfast for 2012. That's taking place on Thursday, September 13. You'll be getting invitations later on this summer. We're looking right now for volunteers, or not volunteers, for nominations. So they come in the following categories: life-saving, act of courage, act of kindness, and philanthropy, community service, both individual and organization, and animal rescue. So if you know of anyone, please, again, go to our website and submit a nomination. And that's it. Thank you very much again.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Okay.
You know, many of us take for granted what the Red Cross is. You know, every time we watch the news and things, we see that the Red Cross is always there. And on September 9, we welcomed you into San Bruno, and we've been partners ever since. So as a committed volunteer myself, I am very impressed with the Red Cross and proud to work side by side with you. And thank you for all your efforts here in San Bruno and around the country. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to also echo that. You haven't done just your job in San Bruno, but you've been dear friends to us, especially with the Resource and Recovery Center, which has really helped a lot of the victims of the explosion and fire recover, not just physically, but psychologically as well. So thank you very, very much. Let's see. We do have one more presentation, and that's a presentation from Alan Johansson, Regional Construction Manager, and Nicole Ziman, I believe. Hopefully, I said that correctly. Peninsula Region Public Outreach Consultant on the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, Harry Tracy Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project.
Good evening, Mayor Ruane and Commissioners. I'm Maureen Barry, and I oversee the communications for the Water System Improvement Program. We're here this evening to talk to you about our projects, particularly the Harry Tracy Water Treatment Plant that is here in your community. I know your time is also very valuable, and you have a very hectic schedule, so we will be as concise, but hopefully as thorough as possible. And Alan Johansson is our Regional Construction Manager, and he'll be doing, following me, making the presentation about the project construction. Also, we have Calvin Huey, who is our Project Manager. He's here if you have further questions. And both of them are San Mateo County residents. So, as you are well aware, our Hetch Hetchy Water System flows across the state, 167 miles by gravity, from the Sierra through various pipes and tunnels. And we are working, of course, here in this circular area. We have numerous projects on the peninsula, which Alan oversees. And there's a number that are either adjacent or in San Bruno, particularly the plant, what we're doing with the reservoir, and we do have a pipeline job that we're doing that is coming through San Bruno also. I wanted to just explain that this is part of the larger Water System Improvement Program that started in the early 2000s. The reason we're doing it, of course, is to make sure you do have water after an earthquake, that you have, that all our customers have greater reliability, that we can continue to provide you the highest quality drinking water, and that, again, you either have water after a catastrophic event or in drought conditions. I might add that the cost of this program is being paid by all users of the Hetch Hetchy Water System in proportion to the amount of water they receive from the system. Harry Tracy Water Treatment Plant. Why are we doing this? As I said, 2002, not only the SFPUC, but our wholesalers decided, you know, we really needed to address our aging infrastructure. Basically, much of it had really outlived its useful life. Secondly, this project and others, or other projects across the bay, are near three and cross three major faults, earthquake faults. And so there was a real need to reinforce our projects, and that's one of the things that we're doing here. In essence, we are in a race against time to make sure that we do these projects, that they are completed before the next earthquake hits. Before Alan talks to you about the actual construction, I just wanted to summarize some of the things that we have done with public outreach. Throughout this project, and it really began in 2008 when we were doing the environmental review, we had meetings with the community, we followed up with mailers, we have our own blogs on these projects, as well as individual contact with a lot of people. In early March 2011, we actually had the first meeting with the community about this project, now that it had been awarded. And we have since then had, you know, follow-up with various people. We have talked with, of course, the apartment residents and manager up the hill, the swim clubs, schools, and other individuals. And we've hosted an open house, and we will do so again in April. April 23, we're planning another open house here in San Bruno. I just, here is a list of some of the ways that we stay connected. And at the end of Alan's presentation, we'll actually, again, have our 24-hour phone line and our blog and our email addresses so that people can get a hold of us. Here, there is actually two. We work with peninsula.org, and then we also work with our CSPL2, which is the pipeline. So some people know us under one name and the other, depending if they're signed up to get RSS feeds, or whenever we update it, they get a notice. So before I turn this over to Alan, if you have any questions about the outreach, or in general, I'd be happy to take those.
Any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ruane and Councilmembers. My name's Alan Johansson. Let's see, for the project overview, basically, we're seismically upgrading and hydraulically improving the plant. We're touching every part of the plant. The most important part is the, we're adding a new 11-million-gallon treated water reservoir, and we're doing improvements to the electrical valve and pipeline system. Right now, our three main focuses are the 11-million-gallon washwater tank, or treated water tank, rather, and the demolition of the existing said basins, and the remodel of the existing operations facility. We started, we had notice to proceed, on March 2011. Substantial completion is expected in December 2014 with final completion February 2015. The contractor, Kiwit, began excavation on the treated water reservoir in August 2011. Their off-haul of the soils began in October 2011, and that will continue for a couple more months, we figure, till May 2012. At that point, they're going to bring in import material, better material to rest the tank on, and that'll run from about April 2012 to June 2012. Following that, the other activity on the treated water reservoir that will impact the motorists on the road would be, or not so much the motorists on the road, excuse me, would be pile driving. We're going to have pile driving activities that are going to go from May 2012 for almost a month, and then during the fall of 2012. Returning to the road impacts, actually, pouring concrete for this large tank will start in March 2013 and continue till mid-year 2014. Throughout our whole program, there's a focus on environmental protection. We have, Kiwit has a full-time compliance officer that's on-site, and we have a, we have our own monitor twice a week, and there's a regional monitor employed by the PUC to oversee all the projects. Part of what they do, there's weekly noise and vibration monitoring at the property lines across from Crystal Springs Road. All the findings to date are within the legal limits. For soil removal and dust control, all soil is tested and sampled by certified technicians and sent to a lab. The soil remains on-site until we get results back from the lab, and then if it's clean, the landfills are identified, and it's trucked and hauled to the sites. If there's any hazmat, then it's protected and sent to other landfills. Trucks are covered and inspected prior to removal, and there's a wheel washing station right by the exit to the plant, onto Crystal Springs. Some of the hazmat sources we have in the soil, there's natural occurring metals and natural occurring asbestos. And then there's also, in the buildings themselves, there's components of the building from years past that have hazmat. They're removed by qualified personnel. So far, we've had 13 truckloads hauled to landfills, and all that material's come from the structures themselves. For road safety, the safety precautions, we've enacted is the traffic control signs and flaggers. There's a pilot vehicle in front of all the large trucks. You can see that, that's the small pickup there. And the pilot vehicles ensure the trucks maintain the speed limit. There's a street sweeper that continues to sweep the street during the day. We estimate, I think it's running now about 50 to 100 round trips a day on the off-haul. When, back in September, we did a, we had a consultant do a road assessment survey, and the report, we've made that available to the City of San Bruno. We were making a commitment to restore the road to pre-construction condition at the completion of the project, and we will coordinate with the City of San Bruno to maintain roadway condition during the project. Any questions?
For the concrete, are they going to be, is it going to be in trucks? Are you having a batch plant within the site, or what are you going to do?
It'll be all in trucks.
But you have made accommodations to repair the streets based on where they were before, before you started?
That's correct.
Okay.
The PUC makes that commitment.
All right, okay.
If I could ask, in, I guess in the simplest terms, what does an 11-million-gallon holding tank look like? I mean, what is the size of this? I mean, is it an expansion of an existing tank? And, you know, when you've only exported a few truckloads of material, where, how do you, I mean, I'm not picturing this, you know, this facility.
We had, the truckloads were, that was the hazmat.
Okay.
And that's all, in terms of soil, we've removed 200,000 tons of soil so far. The size of the tank, Calvin, is 40 feet tall, and what did you say, 240 feet in diameter? So currently, there are two existing tanks. There's one tank and one square reservoir. There's a 6.5-million-gallon and an 8-million-gallon. In a seismic event, there's concerns that a 7.9 earthquake, that they would rupture and go down the hillside. So that's why we're improving the, you know, the current system. We're putting in the new tank, driving all the piles. I think there's over 800 piles to nail it down into the rock.
Yeah. Well, I just want to express that, you know, in this community, you're just a driveway and a sign. So majority of the community doesn't know how big a facility is at the plant. But we do have, have been hearing, getting complaints about, you know, trucks coming out onto Crystal Springs Road on a, you know, on a windy road, and a steep road, and a narrow road. And so, you know, it's a little surprising to have sometimes, you know, certain truck drivers that will, you know, come around the turn a little faster than what our residents are expecting.
I understand. And we've reinforced with our contractor, and we're making sure the pilot vehicles maintain the speeds to keep the trucks down below 25.
Okay. So the water is gravity-fed to Crystal Springs and then to Harry Tracy for treatment?
For, we, let's see, the water comes from San Andreas reservoir. There's two edits from the lake that pipe into the reservoir, into the Harry Tracy. And then there's a lower pump station that pumps it up the hill, and it's treated from there. And then, once it's treated, gravity-fed.
Okay. And treated with, is it, you have any toxics at chloramine, or?
There's chloramination up there. There, there's fluorides no longer, is there fluoride still there? There's fluoride. There are, there's an ozone process that they use for, to handle cryptosporidium. And, let's see, what else do they have up there? There's ferrochloride. So there's, you know, typical chemicals they use for treatment.
Mm-hmm. And I see a lot of work going on in the reservoirs themselves. Is that part of this project also?
That's part of the larger program. That's part of the CSSA project, Crystal Springs-San Andreas Transmission. And basically, what they're doing is, since the fault runs right close to the edits, they're reinforcing the edits, working with the Division of Safety at Dams to make sure that they stay functional after an earthquake.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions?
I do.
Irene?
Okay. Could you tell us about the pile driving? How long? What hours of operation? What can our residents expect? That kind of thing?
We have already driven 80 piles. There were test piles last summer. At that time, we did not get any complaints. The hours of operation are 9 to 4, and not on the weekends.
Okay. That's reasonable. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I think you already addressed in prior presentation, as far as the outreach. As the Vice Mayor mentioned, I've had some calls and emails, and I think it's the unknown. Very well put, that it's a driveway and a sign. What goes on then on the other side? What's really happening? A person to be contacted, that they can get a live person, and have those basic questions asked, because it is, you know, they haven't seen or heard it, and now all of a sudden, a lot is going on, more than they've ever, ever could imagine. And I think that's one of the things that are most important to this community, is just having somebody to be able to pick up the phone, ask the question, be reassured, understand what's happening in the hours, like Irene asked. And I think that's one of the most important things. So the outreach is critical, and good information, contact, and just advance notice would be helpful.
Good. And it's important to keep our staff, you know, informed of what's going on, because when people ask us, we're going to ask them, and it's easy if they have updates, you know, very frequently.
Sure. We'll make sure we do that.
Good. Anything else? Irene?
Yeah, thank you. Am I understanding correctly, there's going to be an open house on April 23?
That's correct. And we are waiting to have a room ready.
Right. The microphone.
That is the proposed date, and so far, it's a go, unless something would come up and we can't use that facility. And I think, Tina, Nicole is, I believe, coordinating with you on that, and that's what we're thinking. So we should, we'll have something out definitely before the end of the month, so people have plenty notice on that. We'll also have some signs nearby.
Okay. So anyone's welcome to go.
Absolutely.
Look at it. Okay. And I urge everyone to, I've seen it a couple times, and it's really a very interesting facility. Also, could we make sure it's on cable, and on our website, so that people can see it advertised as well?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the open house Maureen was talking about is going to be off-site, so we're not going to have a tour.
Oh.
But we have, I talked to Clara, we are offering for the council members, and the mayor, and senior staff to take a tour on one of the Saturdays.
Okay. Then, I'm sorry, what's the open house for? And where is it going to be?
I believe it's at the senior center here. Isn't that correct?
Yes. And what we're doing is, we're allowing people to come, ask questions, and talk to people that are actually working on the project. And we'll have information about where we are to date, what they can expect going forward.
Okay. So it's more of an information of the construction, rather than how the plant works?
Right. However, you know what we have done? In other occasions, it might be something that we could do, is actually videotape your tour. You know, you may have questions, we wouldn't get all of those on, but we could probably take that edited, and we could show it to you. And then perhaps, if you think it's worthwhile, we could also include that on your cable TV, so people can see, you know, what we do there, and how we assure the highest quality water.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll work with you on that.
I'd like to add, a lot of visuals. Yeah. Because according to your presentation, you'll be pumping concrete for a year. So I think they deserve to know where all this concrete's going.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item five, review of the agenda. I don't have any changes. Anyone have anything?
Uh-uh.
Item six, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 28, 2012, and special closed-session council meeting of March 3, 2012. Errors, corrections, or missions?
My name is Alan Lubke. I live on Fleetwood Drive. It took several readings of the minutes by myself before I was able to find anything that needed correcting. To the minutes themselves, on page four of seven, it stated that Management Analyst Shannon said the city's goal, this was regarding recycling program, was to meet the requirements of AB 939 to divert solid waste 50% by the year 2000. I question the validity in the, as to why that, the year 2000 is written there. Then, going on to the attachments to the meeting, I want to address this to the staff regarding their written staff reports, two of them in particular. One is Dennis, how do you pronounce that? Haig? Haig? Haag or Haig? Haag, Dennis Haag, Fire Chief. The date of his staff report is March 13, 2012. Maybe this was on the agenda, yet page two of two is, of his staff report is dated January 13th, 2004. There's a staff report from the city attorney, Mark Zaffarano, and Clara Fabre, Public Services Director, also dated March 13th, 2012. And the second page of that report is dated September 13th, 2011.
Thank you.
In response to his comment about the minutes, Jim Shannon actually did say the year 2000. So they reflect what was said.
Okay. Irene?
Oh, just, just clarify, the bill that's being referenced, 939, was, the requirements were to do 50% diversion rate by the year 2000. And then there's subsequent bills that have added on to that. So that's what the reference was for.
Okay. Would you like to prove the minutes? Okay. Is that a motion?
Sure.
Second.
Second, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless they're requested by council member, citizen, or staff. Questions on consent?
If there's no questions, move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar approved. Public hearings, notices have been published, posted in mail. We don't have any public hearings this evening. Item number nine, public comment for items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting on any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, ladies and gentlemen. On tonight's agenda, there is item 10B, adopt resolution approving property owner notice.
Mr. Lubke, Mr. Lubsky, this is for items not on this agenda. So if you wish to speak on 10B, then you can speak on 10B.
I'm just referencing this to get to my topic, if you'll pardon me.
Go ahead.
Adopt resolution approving property owner notice and protest process for 2012-13 garbage rate increase proposed by Recology San Bruno. This is the identical wording to an item 10B on the February 28th meeting regarding garbage rate increases. I hope to be educated when this item is presented tonight, when the item is presented tonight, as to why, if there is not a new agenda item regarding the, the garbage increase and the item with exact wording was approved last week, why it is entitled, why it is titled the same as the previous and not given a descriptive term to inform the members of the public what the discussion will be about so that members of the public, when reading the agenda, can make a determination as to whether or not to comment, attend the meeting. So that's, I'm not commenting specifically on that. I'm commenting on labeling agenda items, if you will, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number 10, conduct of business. A, adopt resolution approving property owner notice and protest process for water and wastewater rate increases for 2012, 2013 through 2016, 2017. Staff, please.
Honorable Mayor, council member, good evening. Tonight, tonight is our intent to provide you with our recommendation and the reason for those recommendations to set water and wastewater rates. These recommendations were developed jointly between my department and also with finance department, supported by a expert, outside expert specialized in the same type of rate setting. The project manager is Jim Shannon and he will help me with the presentation. And also, I have here Robert Howard, the deputy for Operation Force Water and Water. You will, during this presentation, you will have a history of the rate setting in the last few years. And then you will be provided with the recommendation for the proposed rate for sewer and water and also with some proposed structural changes to the water and sewer rate and then next steps. Last time, when you had this item before you was back in May of 2009, when the sewer and water rate was set for three years. At that time, you approved a rate increase for each year of 11.8% for water and 10%, 10.2% for waste, for wastewater. As you heard three years ago and when you set those rates and you heard many times since then, including during our last council meeting, the reason for this proposed rate adjustment is the age infrastructure of the city which had deferred maintenance, deferred replacement and if is not addressed, will continue to deteriorate. The need for addressing overage, overaging infrastructure is reflected through experienced unacceptable level of sewer overflow and which has a impact on the public and the environment and our residents. Also, our system experiencing a very high number of water main leaks and breaks. As you know, our age of the infrastructure is between 100 year to 60 year old in average of 60 year old infrastructure. Based on the last rate adjustment, what you approved, the city implemented many projects. Replaced 1.5 mile of water and sewer main on Mastick Avenue. Replaced and improved the Maple Water Pump Station. Replaced the main on Montgomery. And also addressed the problem on Trenton. Three, you, uh, to continue with the same, to continue with the, with the same policy, what you said three years ago, when the last rate adjustment was approved and to address the need as known by you. Our recommendation tonight is to continue with the same aggressive policy, replace, replacing the infrastructure and to adjust our water rates with a 9.8% and our wastewater rates with 10.3%. This rate, how you can see, is slightly below the 10-year projection done three years ago. This is, beside setting this, adjusting the rate, also our recommendation is to make some structural adjustment to the rate to improve the equity across the customer base. This generally is a, will have a small financial impact on the users. The impact is, will range between minus or plus $2 for residential units to up to $50 for large commercial users. The subcommittee met twice at the end of March and also in beginning of, uh, in, in the beginning of March and end of February. And approved policy goals and objectives for setting the rates. I will not go over those policy. I will just highlight a few of them, which was to minimize the financial impact on the customers, to maintain the long-term financial sustainability and also to have a fair and equitable to set rates which will be fair and equitable to all customer classes. How the rates are developed? For water, the rates and the 10-year financial projection includes, includes all of operation and maintenance cost, a slight decrease in water consumption to, due to increased conservation efforts, increase in cost of purchase water from SFPUC and continuation of the 10-year main replacement schedule as was approved by you. For wastewater, the rates developed includes all operational and maintenance costs, how was presented, including the changes needed to meet the requirement set by the regional board and by the bankkeepers. This, the same decrease in water consumption and also water, plant improvements at the water quality plant. And continuation of the 25-year main replacement as approved three years ago. For water, how I indicated before, is a recommended overall increase for 9.8% for each year. This is a overall increase based on the structural changes. Will be some variation exactly for each customer class. You will see, and the public will see, upcoming projects taking place. Just to mention a few, for water, will be the main replacement on Marion and Spigl's Drives. Replacement of water mains between Genevin and San Bruno Avenue. Construction of the College Pump Station. And also Cunningham and Glamview Tanks improvement and also the replacement of the Commodore Well. Just to mention a, a few projects. For wastewater, 10.3 overall increase for each year. Upcoming projects, Canes, sewer main replacement on Canes. Addressing additional problems on Trenton. And replacing sewer mains in the eastern portion of the city. Comparing our existing rates with other jurisdictions around us, you will see that our rate for water is slightly higher than the average between the jurisdictions around us. And that is the case also for our sewer rates. It's very hard to compare rates between agency based on the fact that our systems are very different. The age of our system is different. The size of the systems are different and depend a lot how historically those systems were maintained and replaced. Based on the 10-year financial projection, our recommendation is to set the rates for five, for the next five years. This recommendation was supported by the subcommittee also to set the rates for five years. The reason for this recommendation is to have greater, greater certainty for project planning. Also to reduce administrative costs for rate setting and to be able to phase in more gradually those rate structure changes what I mentioned before. I must mention also that you have the opportunity, even if the rates will be approved for five years, in, during those five years, anytime if our financial picture will change or our need is changing, then you have the opportunity to initiate new process anytime and to make those changes. As I alluded to before, part of our recommendation is to make some structural changes and I will let Jim Shannon to take you through those structural changes.
Thank you, Clara. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. As we look to readjust our rate for the next five years, it's an opportunity to see not only, you know, obviously what's driving the needed rate increases, which is the investment in our capital infrastructure, but to take an opportunity to look to make sure that the way the rates are structured and allocated among different customer types and different customer classes are the most fair and equitable that is appropriate. So we, we took this opportunity to review this with the, the subcommittee as well as with our, our, the folks at Bartle Wells who have helped us with crafting the rate modifications who are here tonight. And, and Alex Handler's and Kat Sang from Bartle Wells are here. And I'm sure will help answer questions later on. But, so we have a couple of recommendations to adjust the structure for both the water system and for the sewer system rates. And so the first one for water is aligning the fixed charges with meter capacity and spread that alignment out over five years. Essentially, each water bill consists of a, a charge based on your meter size and a charge based on how much water you use. Currently, the monthly charges are Currently, the monthly charges are, do not reflect exactly the meter flow capacity. For example, a two-inch meter has about five times the capacity of a 3/4-inch meter, but the monthly fixed charge is only 3 1/2 times greater. So the first recommendation is to, over the period of five years, to readjust the fixed charges so that the large meter customer is paying their proportional share of the fixed charge. So that's the, that's the first recommendation. The second one is regarding that variable piece. So right now, we have a two-tiered system where if you use between 0 and 18 units of water, a unit of water is 748 gallons. It's just the trade lingo there for units of water. Right now, 84% of the folks fall into the first tier, and so only 15% fall into the second tier. And so the idea is to have folks conserve some water. However, right now, since we have 85% in the first tier, we have a little bit of room to make those tiers a little more appropriate for the actual use. So if we switch to a three-tiered system, we would go from 0 to 10, 10 to 20, and then 20 and above for your tier rates. And so it would have a minor impact on some customers. Some customers will see a benefit because they could stay in tier one the whole time and see a little bit lower. Some of the higher-end folks, it would impact them a little bit more. But again, the higher-end folks are a little smaller percentage of our total customer class. Then we have a couple of recommendations for wastewater. And it's really aligning the rates to reflect how difficult it is to clean the waste stream from those clients. So what we did is we want to verify the wastewater pollutant strength for each customer class and make sure that the rate for that customer class is similar to what it costs to actually treat the wastewater. So when we were looking through our rates, we found some opportunities to make some minor adjustments. Doesn't have a significant rate impact, but it does impact a few customers, and we'll show that on a couple of slides. And the last one is very similar to what we have in sewer, excuse me, what we have in water, where we have a combination of your bill as a fixed and variable charge. However, in wastewater, every meter, regardless of the size, is charged the same fixed cost at $18.35. Doesn't matter if you're a single-family home with a 3/4-inch meter or if you're a large apartment building with a 4-inch meter, you sort of pay the same fixed cost. So the idea is to make that more equitable across the customer classes, again, by spreading that out over a five-year period with a fixed charge capped for 4-inch water meters or larger. And the analogy to use sort of is, is if you can think about it, the charges that trucks have to pay to cross the Bay Bridge. Not only do you pay each time, not only do you pay a toll each time you go across the bridge, the more axles you have on your truck, sort of the more you have to pay because you have more of an impact to the bridge. Similar situation for our water and sewer systems where the large, the large customers will have sort of a greater impact on the system than the smaller customers, which is why we have the recommendation to align these fixed charges with the actual capacity of the customers. Here is a little breakdown of how the structural recommendations would shake out among a few different types of customer classes. There, for your typical single-family home, which is 16 units of water every two months and 12 units of your winter use for wastewater, there's not really much of a change. Just a little bit of increase in, for water, if you would just do the rate increase only as opposed to doing the rate increase plus some of the structural changes that we had just recommended. So doing the structural changes is just a little bit of an increase for water, not much for sewer. If you were actually a low-water user, you would actually benefit a little bit more. So you'd actually see a decrease. And then here are the slides for the rates for all five years of the proposed rate period, what the bimonthly water bill is, what the increase is from the pre, with, from the previous year, and then the same for sewer. And again, these are bimonthly bills, not monthly bills. So these are the bills that your typical San Bruno homeowner would see if they used 18 units of water and their winter average water use was 12, 12 units of water. The final recommendation to consider that really isn't a part of this action, but something that we'll probably look at at a later date is to collect the wastewater charges on the property tax roll. This would assure 100% collection of the total bill regardless of the delinquencies. It's a very, it's a pretty common practice among a lot of different peninsula agencies. That, the difference though is the change in payment responsibility shifts from the tenants, whoever lives at the property, to the property owners. And so to allow that transition enough time, the recommendation would be to roll this out after sort of a year of lead time to give folks plenty of time to readjust any rental agreements they may have.
In summary, our recommendation is to issue the notice for five-year annual rate increase with 9.8% for water, 10.3% for wastewater, modify the water rate structure to align fixed charge with meter size, and to add the tier for single-family customers to modify the wastewater rate structure to align fixed charge with water meter size also, and to align wastewater pollutants ranked for each customer class with treatment cost. Next step, what you can expect, to issue the Proposition 218 noticing. The mailing will include also for the property owner notification for the garbage rates. On May 8 will be the first public hearing for rate adjustment. And on May 22 will be the second reading of the ordinance with the intent to have the new rate, adjusted rate in place by July 1. In meantime, during this time, depending on your need and desire, if you want any additional meeting or study session, certainly the staff will be available, including the outside consultant to help you with any information what you might need. This concludes our presentation, and all of us will try to answer your questions.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. I don't expect, I don't expect an immediate answer to this because I'm just going to come from left field on this one. I look at your policy goals and objectives and part of, the beginning of your presentation, and, believe me, I don't need any explanation on what's needed in this city and, you know, 100 years of deteriorating infrastructure and things and trying to catch up over many years and what we've done just in the last 15 years to help improve our system. But when you say aim for a steady gradual annual rate increase to the extent possible to help minimize the annual impact on customers, and you look at your plan for 10 years, after, it's 100%, over 100% increase. I mean, four years from now, we're going to be paying water for, you know, bimonthly $175. Now, I may be okay for that, and I know there's going to be complaints from some residents. So I, the question I ask is, when you're dealing with consultants and when you're trying to struggle with what needs to be done, how much money needs to go into a capital improvement program, what are you deter, I mean, is there a formula as to what is comfortable for an average resident? Because to go, you know, each year when that increase is 10% more, I mean, that's a noticeable increase, and especially when it's compounded with water, compounded with wastewater, and then garbage, and then cable, and then every other utility. It's, I mean, we're going to hear it. And, I mean, 16 years ago, we sat here and we, we understood, and we spiked the rates. But this is almost like a spike every year. So I want to just get an idea of what staff, consultants, subcommittee, where are you, how are you determining that this is an adequate increase for the average resident?
Mr. Councilmember. Ask something on top of that. I believe as mentioned at the very beginning that this was a long-term projection and that we have the opportunity to scale it back or increase it as necessary over the years. Will we be getting with this continuous updates as to this is where you are, where you should be, and how does, how's that fit? Because I see Ken's point, if this is a stamp in July 1, that this is what's going to happen for sure, then that's one thing. But if it's, this is where we think we need to go, but we're going to give you updates as we go along, and we can, we can scale this back if in fact we need to over a period of time.
Yes, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. Let me try and address the comment that you've made, Vice Mayor Ibera. The, I think that there was perhaps a, we might have captured this bullet point on the policy issues in a slightly different manner because I think your commentary is well-taken. The process of setting rates is a, primarily a function of evaluating at the minimal effective level the revenue requirement for operating, maintaining, rehabilitating, and otherwise sustaining the integrity and the reliability of the utility system. So it is a func, it is an activity that is fundamentally driven by a revenue requirement. Now, that said, it is always our objective to minimize, consistent with the City Council's clear guidance and policy direction, that we do everything that is possible to understand and to minimize the impact on individual ratepayers. This is, and I don't think there's any two ways about it, this is a significant increase on both the water and the wastewater costs for virtually all customers. And there, while there is some opportunity to contain or control costs that an individual household, for example, might experience by implementing water conservation techniques, I think it is fair to say that the rate increase is probably still significant for most of the households in our community. So I think it was, it is perhaps a bit misstated to suggest that the, specifically the, the, that the rates minimize the impact on customers, although that is a highest priority in our evaluation of the rates. What this bullet point was intended to remind the City Council is our continuing adherence and understanding to the City Council's policy priority, which was articulated three years ago when we presented a 10-year planning horizon for rate setting. And at that time, and again, three years ago, we presented a variety of options for your consideration whereby the rate could be set in a manner that addressed specifically the revenue requirement, the expected revenue requirement in each of those 10 years. And given the variability and when projects might be completed, might, using your word again, spike the rates in a given year 15 or 18% and in the next year, make the rate increase, say, 5%. What was intended here is simply adherence to the Council's guidance that what you wanted was revenue, ratepayers to be able to anticipate what the expected annual rate increase would be by providing a level annual rate increase. There's, again, I don't think any argument can reasonably be made that this doesn't represent a potential significant impact to some of our rate-paying households. However, it is fully consistent with the revenue requirements at the minimum level for the enterprise operations, and it is consistent with the City Council's previously articulated policy guidance and direction. I hope that clarifies at least what we were thinking when we wrote this.
Did you have, did you have like a minimum increase in mind? I mean, that, that you said we had to be, I mean, is this, is this the base where it has to be? You know, in order to, you know, achieve?
In order to sustain operations at the current levels and to provide the necessary improvements to assure long-term reliability of the system and a continuing ability to serve our customers, the answer is yes. That said, you have the ability, as the mayor indicated, in any year to decrease expenditures, defer capital projects, reduce operations, and thereby decrease the revenue requirement. Should you decide to do that, the legal requirements for providing property owner notice would allow you to do that to lower the rate without any further notice to the public. You're only precluded from increasing the rate. So you could reduce expenditures. Staff is not recommending that you consider that at this time in any major way. And you could do that in any year of this recommended five-year rate implementation.
I'm going to be facetious and I say, I'm sustaining the Council's argument from three years ago because I remember, now it's all coming back to me, that we did discuss the same points because we were somewhat alerted to how, how, how high some of these rates were going to be increased. And so I believe we did reduce the rate that was recommended.
I think we leveled it off. I don't recommend, I don't remember that.
I think we made an adjust, I mean, we made an adjustment that, that, that reduced the actual expenditure. I got that off my chest because I know that we are, you know, this is, I mean, you know, with, you know, with the garbage coming up and with, you know, these, with these rates, and this is, that's the sign of the times. It's just, it's the time of the year that this happens. And, you know, we have to go out there and sell it and hopefully encourage our, you know, our customers, our residents that, you know, we are doing the right thing, whatever we do. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Irene?
Thank you. More of a comment, and I'd like to thank staff and the consultants. They answered all our questions. They went, we had one meeting, and Councilman Salazar and I had many questions, and we wanted immediate information, and they came back to us very quickly with rate adjustments that we had asked about and some backup information. So I really appreciate what you all did. That's the text that sent me. The other piece I want to emphasize with this is nobody likes to pay increased rates. We all, sitting up here, are going to have to pay increased rates. It's not a pleasant thing particularly. But remember that the rate increases are going for the most part to capital improvements. The capital improvements are going to the health and safety of our residents. I was sharing some pictures that my father had taken in 1967 where there was raw sewage on the streets, and people walked in it or drove their cars in it and took it into the house. And I'm sure it was not a pleasant or healthy experience. And so from that point, not all that long ago to now, we have improved the system, and we still have a lot of improvement to do. And that's what the money goes to. It goes to those kinds of things. So while we don't want to increase rates, we have to. The other piece I want to remind people, we do still have, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the 25% discount for low-income families. That does not come from ratepayers. We're not robbing Peter to pay Paul type of thing. It comes from overcharges, I mean, I'm sorry.
Penalty charges.
Penalty charges, that's what it was. So it, it doesn't change your, everyone else's rate. So we do have that, and I believe we're the only city in San Mateo County who does. So that's some relief for some people.
One thing that confused me, but I think I've got it now, is that the slide was saying over the next 10 years, but rate increases that we're referencing in resolution is over the next five years. Just so that they're, just because the average person, and I'm, I'm probably below average in most people's mind, but I would have said, well, wait a minute. I thought it's five, but it says 10.
You are absolutely correct. What I am, I was referring to and the slide was referring to. to that all of the project financial projection was done for 10-year. That was for 10-year three years ago. Now that was the financial projection for the next 10-year, beginning this year. But the recommendation is only just for five years, to set the rates for the next five years.
The other thing, in one of the slide, it stated that this is for operation and maintenance costs. So to me, that indicates not only the vehicles, staffing, and other things that comes along, labor parts, et cetera, to operate the systems. With that means staffing. Staffing could mean additional headcount to the department, which two weeks ago alluded additional staffing, that I'd like to better understand. It also I saw in the presentation two weeks ago, if I'm not mistaken, to an acquisition of a, if and correct me, vector in this year of 2012, which would be the is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. That would be the third vector within a year that we purchased. Have we received the other two factors yet?
The second is is not here yet.
The first one is, the new first one?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. So I'm looking to the need for a third vector, which now we have a potential need for a more staff, which is not quantified yet, but I guess that would be for budget. But these percentages and numbers derive the percentage, the rate increase of what is perceived is needed in order to operate the department that will come to us in the budget cycle. And then at that time, we're going to be presented with additional machines and operations and staffing?
In this 10-year financial projection is not included anything which was not discussed, presented, and approved by you previously. This 10-year projection does not include additional staff, includes all of the requirement what was presented to you to meet the CD and CDO requirements, how I indicated, set by those agreements. Also includes a certain escalation, how you are projecting projecting any financial long-term cost, but does not include any additional staffing or any additional improvement other than already approved and previously discussed with the council.
Okay, so did I miss two weeks ago that it was not additional, correct me if I'm wrong, please, is that I saw another vector, and you're saying that was already prior approved three years ago or whenever the prior talks, and the term was used staffing. Staffing was additional. And you're telling me that that's not the case, so that at the budget cycle, we're not going to have anything come forward for additional staffing or headcount to the department?
It is correct. The third vector is included in our proposed capital improvement program.
The proposed capital improvement program for with the rate increases, or are you saying prior to this? Or is it upcoming? So I guess I'm a little lost at this point. I'm sorry.
The third vector is included in our existing improvement program, which was reviewed by the council previously. And this 10-year financial projection does not include other than inflation and all of all of the required adjustment through those years, does not include additional staffing need other than already presented to you in our in our prior discussion for wastewater.
For 211 to 12.
Correct.
So when we go.
I would just like to add one item of detailed clarification on the Vector truck. Vector was shown in the capital improvement program budget that you saw last year. It was shown.
Correct.
As an acquisition for the current year. Correct?
Frankly, I really don't remember if for what year was shown. I wouldn't. I am just not certain.
Okay. I believe that it was shown as an acquisition for the current year. And if that's the case, then that approval has not yet been submitted to or provided by the city council. We will double check that.
You are correct.
To make sure that what I'm telling you is accurate. Suffice it to say that any expenditures are approved each year in the budget process. They are estimated and anticipated for planning purposes in the multi-year rate-setting process. But they are not authorized and they are not expended until the city council acts on the specifically on the budget. So the director has told you that this planning horizon does not include any additional staff, and we will re-verify what I'm telling you about the Vector truck.
I am pretty positive. That was, yes, that is correct. Was included in our this year plan.
Right.
The third vector.
Correct. So you have not yet acted to approve the acquisition. It was identified as a future year acquisition in last year's capital budget. So it's correct to say that you have seen it.
Okay, thank you. And I know a lot happens in three years. I think all of us here in this community realize, three years ago to today, a lot can happen. And it is hard to explain to the average person like myself to say, well, every system's different because in most, you go in the house, you turn on the faucet, the water runs, you flush the toilet. You know, you're all hoping it goes where it's supposed to. And then to say, but everything's different. Well, it is. It's different on the age, it's different on this. I sometimes look to South City and look at those rates, and I'm told, well, there's a lot of commercial. And so that can help balance out the rates to where the homeowner may not be paying as much. So then I look to San Carlos, which obviously doesn't have the type of commercial infrastructure, and they're low as well. So and I know San Carlos is not a, shall we say, a foster city that has a newer infrastructure. So it would help me to have some something quantified to tell folks, well, everything's different. Well, we know that. Every city's different. Everyone's unique. But at the same time, systems operate in some similar manners. So how do you explain to the person that San Carlos is cheaper because?
I just will would have one comment on that, that depending if you are making those investment in your system in the right time. If you are deferring those, then the cost will go up. You would need to assess their system, when they've made investment on their system, how much they already replaced on ongoing basis, and minimizing costs replacing in time, or if they had a high deferred replacement and maintenance costs. That's why you really need to understand the whole system and the history of investment in their system to have a holistic picture.
Does it have any reference that because both of those cities deal with cow water, that it's different because they're a bigger entity, or that they have more resources, or it's more divided out? Is that a potential in addition to the holistic aspect of it?
I I am not specifically commenting on that city not knowing enough about their system. But I would say also that size count or makes a different makes a difference also. If you have a bigger system, then it's possible, depending on your system, maybe the rate can be lower also. But the main thing is how how you are investing on ongoing basis and how you are maintaining your system. Exactly no difference than any house or anything else. If you are investing the right time in your home before the roof will be destroyed, you are reinvesting in the maintenance and ongoing replacement, that's how you are minimizing the cost. If you are deferring some of those major replacement and repair, then your end cost will be higher, that you will need to replace instead of just repairing certain portion of that home or system, any system.
So there are a number of factors that go into an analysis that would more specifically answer that question. It is actually a fairly complex and detailed analysis that would need to occur. If the council would like, we can certainly attempt to get the information from either or both of those jurisdictions and to try and put together an analysis that may help you or help us all understand that question a little bit better. We'd be happy to return with that information. That's council's pleasure.
Anyone else like to ask questions of staff?
Your Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, city of San Bruno staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alan Lubke. I reside on Fleetwood Drive. I have three and a half questions. My first is the one and a half question is what portion of the fee or assessment is it proposed that be placed on the assessment tax roll? And then how how would that what amount what does that amount to for, say, an individual versus what it would be on their on their tax, on their, you know, monthly monthly statement or whatever we get twice monthly or whatever?
Excuse me, Carol, could you push that button, please? Thank you. City manager?
I'm sorry, couldn't you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, would you like me to would you like us to answer that question?
Pardon?
Would you like us to answer that?
Yes, please.
Okay. The wastewater charge is proposed to be collected on the property tax bill beginning July of 2013. It would be collected at precisely the same amount that it is currently under consideration by you. The method of collection would not change the amount that would be collected.
So already on there then. Okay, then the question that I took care of, one and a half. The next question is, if you could just throw up one of those charts that shows a percentage increases by year, and I were those increases from the all from the base year, or would they go from year from the previous year?
In each case, the increase is from the previous year.
From the previous year. So, okay. So and do you have any do you have one that with the percentages there that shows percentages? I think that's perhaps what Vice Mayor Ibera was getting at, where he got those where he accumulated those percentages. So it's from the previous year. So year one, we go a percent, and then we then we had a new level, and then the next we go to another, and that's from the base level. Okay. What would be then my final question is, what would be the total cost for 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 the city for by for picking up the tab for the public if we decided to do if the city decided to do that based on the windfall of $70 million? What would be the cost of the city for, let's just say, for the first increase for the first first year? What would be the total cost?
This information is not available. Mr. Mayor would need to be developed by us.
Yeah, that information's not available. And I can tell you right now that that $70 million is not even in the bank yet. So.
Well, I understand that. All I'm asking is, I'm asking a what-if question. I would think that you you're basing you you certain amount of fees that you're going to charges that you're going to increase, you're going to get a certain dollar amount from the, you know, what's that total dollar amount for the first year? That's all I'm asking.
So the question is the amount of revenue raised in the in the first year. Certainly have that information available. So for water, the 2012, 13 billing revenues would be $10.8 million. And for sewer, it would be 11.9.
10, 10.7?
10.8 and 11.9.
11.9. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Name is Paul Malenka. I live at 323 Cypress Avenue. Last time I was here, I talked about the same thing. It's ironic. I just came just to listen. On the water bill, we have two things, service charge for water and service charge for sewer. Water service charge is 25 and change, and the sewer's $18 and change. I had the same question when I came up the first time, maybe three or four years ago, and I was told it's a study. Well, it adds to the bill, and it wasn't addressed at all tonight. All you talked about was water, 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 and infrastructure. Isn't the service charge part of the bill, and shouldn't it be addressed in the same way? Thank you.
So if I understand the question appropriately.
A little closer, Jim.
If I understand that question appropriately, it was a discussion of how is the is the fixed charge treated with respect to the variable charge. So in the in the proposed rates, the proposed five-year rates, there are proportional increases both to the monthly the monthly fee, the for so the $18 per month for residential sewer would would go up accordingly, as well as the variable rate increase charge. So both both aspects of the of the of the charges that appear on your bill would be addressed by the by the revised rates, if that answers the question.
Does that answer your question? Okay.
Well, I'm I'm confused now. I mean, the ratepayer is paying based on its usage the amount of water and the amount of used water that goes out. So what is the service charge? What does that go towards? You know, is that just the charge to be able to use the system?
The the service charge is is the proportion of charge sort of allocated to the the fixed cost. There are a variety of ways to to assign rates and to sign a portion charges. And for San Bruno, we have about 22% of the cost are deemed as fixed costs. And then the remaining would be a variable cost. So that is how the rate is proportioned between the variable charge on your bill and the the fixed monthly cost on your on your bill. Doesn't 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 get added.
Try it one more time.
Okay, okay, all right. Can you is that the cost that goes into the capital improvement? Is that the amount that goes into the capital improvement? I mean, if you're talking about rates of the amount of water that we use or the amount of sewage that we expel, whatever, you know, we're paying for that. What is the amount that goes into that bypasses all of our uses that goes into the till to pay for the long-term capital improvement?
Right. That that actual amount isn't separated on a year-to-year basis, and it would vary depending on how many improvements are done in a particular year. So there is the all the fixed charges and the variable charges are lumped together into the enterprise funds.
Could we just clarify? I think that you're asking whether the fixed charge, based on meter size, is segregated in some way and dedicated to capital. Is that the question?
Actually, initially, which I thought the resident was going to was asking was, what does that charge go towards? And I don't really care how it's broken up, whether it's fixed or it's variable, whatever. What is that $18 for sewer and 20 something dollars for water? What does that go to pay for?
Pays for all of the operating costs, including staff, equipment, contractually obligated costs, for example, for operation of the South San Francisco-San Bruno wastewater treatment plant, and for capital improvements to maintain the system.
So all lumped together.
All lumped together.
Because that would be that would be the variable in various communities as to why, you know, we set aside more than, say, another community to do capital improvements, why we we have a larger staff than maybe another community does or something. Okay, thank you.
So we have a gallon. So we have a gallon of water in a bucket and we're paying for the water, but we also have to pay for somebody to, to take the water and, and let you use it. And if you have a gallon of waste, we pay for, you know, the waste, if you will, but you also have to take, have to pay somebody to throw it away and, and dispose of it properly. So that's the difference between the fixed cost and the, and the, the other.
I think the theory behind rate setting, and this is a very typical methodology, is that you have a cost that is, part of the charge that you collect recognizes the fact that the system has to be ready to deliver you the first drop of water or to accept the first bucket of wastewater. That is a, it's a, it's a feature of what is necessary in order to operate the system. Then there is the cost that is associated with the, and the revenue requirement that is associated with treating a little bit or a lot, or delivering a little bit or a lot. Now, so it is a, it is a means of capturing in the rate structure, a, the best possible means of, of accounting for the customer's demand and utilization of the system. And that's, it's philosophically how rates are set. The revenue all comes out and goes into, into one pot and then it is used to provide for all of the operating requirements of the system. So it's, it's, it's not a one-to-one relationship, but it is in terms of the way rates are typically set as a means of providing fairness or equity across customers. Everybody owns a portion of the fact that this, or needs to pay a proportionate share of the fact that the system needs to be ready. And then customers, based on their utilization, might pay more or less because they are using more or less. It's a rate-setting methodology.
Thank you. That was clear. And, and, and I want to apologize to Jim and staff. This isn't, I don't want to be argumentative or anything, but I'm just trying to understand it because I know that there are going to be residents that are going to be asking and, you know, every single utility, we're gonna have to be able, to be able to explain all, every single cent that we're going, that's going into it.
Okay, Michael?
Through the chair, I just wanted to add my own perception of, of the whole process and, you know, the, the questions are definitely valid and something that Councilmember O'Connell and I found out pretty quickly is that it's not a simple process and there are probably a million ways that you could do this. And at least on the sewer side, we, we asked the question, what if we went to just a flat rate? And it, it's something that's available to us. We can take away the variable part from that and it would be a lot simpler. But the answer came back that that would make it dramatically more expensive for our biggest usage base. And so we decided not to go that route and keep that fixed versus, fixed plus variable system that we have currently. And so it's really, once we identified the target and we knew how much money we needed to get in order to maintain the system, from there, it was just a matter of slicing it up different ways. And it's just an exercise in cost accounting where you figure out what is something reasonable. But like the city manager said, it's, it's everything. And, and part of it, we kept as a base and that keeps a, a little bit of stability in the rate so that we know that we have the cash flow that we need to operate the plant on, on a monthly basis. And then the rest of it, we, we can make variable and that's the part that the customers have control over. So they maintain a little bit of control over their, their overall rate, but a part of it stays constant for, for cash flow purposes.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Just a quick question on the resolution. We have a new resolution before us tonight that wasn't in the packet. What I'm trying to understand is, and I guess it's just to identify the particular percentages at the water wastewater, but also when it starts to say, to reveal the revenue needed 10.3% for each year for 10 years to cover necessary operating and capital improvement costs and, and of course, I understand this for five years, the state's at the bottom. But what's, what's, what's the necessity or the intent in order to allude to this is what's needed for 10 years? Because to me, if we get to the fifth year, to, to predict 10 years, I mean, the sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth and 10 year, that this is already what we, I, I don't know how you, again, I'm not an expert here, there's a lot of smarter people in this room, but I don't know how I can sit here and say, yeah, you're right, the ninth and 10th year, this is what it should be.
The whereas clauses are intended in the resolution only to outline the thought process that got you to the conclusion that is the action embodied in the resolution. And that, this, these couple of clauses were inserted in order for full explanation and clarity about how the rates were analyzed and the information that was utilized in order to get to the rate program. And again, to articulate, as we discussed earlier, the ongoing policy of this city to look on a multi-year and advanced planning horizon in order to maintain as close as possible a level annual rate increase profile. So that's the only purpose for that information being inserted into the resolution. It's the council's pleasure to not include that information. It can certainly be deleted without any effect on the action itself.
I was just trying to better understand, but I don't, maybe to the subcommittee, I'm trying, I'm, you know, I know we're looking for five years, but now we're actually projecting six to 10 years, is that to give people a heads up to say, well, this is what we think might be happening in the sixth through 10th year potentially?
Well, part of it is the, the study looked at the types of things that needed to be done within the 10-year frame, timeframe and the kind of predicted costs of those things. So, and I believe is $84 million. And if we have to divide those things up in 10 years, how much do we need per year to do that? And that's what it came out to. So the five-year is to give us, well, I believe that's the outer limit of the 218 notice, is it not? So that, that's where the five, we, we were given the choice of the three-year or the five-year. Michael and I and staff were recommending to you, we do the five-year notification, but the figures came from a 10-year horizon. At the end of any given year, we might have, might find that we have made so many capital improvements that we don't need to do as much and we can adjust after that. But, but if we say, it's, it's like you look at your house, okay, in 10 years, I need to, and replace the rugs, replace linoleum, put new faucets in, replace the roof and, and do new concrete in the driveway, that's gonna cost me, you know, $200,000. For 10 years, I, you know, I have to spend $20,000 to, to get those things done. So that's kind of where we came from.
Yeah. And I do know costs go up.
Yes.
So what we're looking at today, we can predict in eight, nine, 10 years, how much things are gonna cost. And we've got a crystal ball too, so. But I do appreciate that explanation that helped.
Does that clarify?
Clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I got it right.
Anything else, Michael?
I was just gonna add that part of, of what the consultants brought to the table was the fact that they were able to model some of this and, and do sensitivity studies based on what if certain variables were to change. And given that, I mean, they, we looked at a lot of different scenarios. They looked at probably way more scenarios than were presented to us, but what, what we ended up seeing is that there was very little variability in the proposed rate based on any number of factors. And the biggest driver is the fact that we need so many capital, large capital projects, that that is the biggest driver. And I, I think staff felt that we had a pretty good handle on what those, even over a 10-year horizon, what those costs would be for, for those projects.
I appreciate your clarification too. And so this action tonight is just to allow Prop 218 to go forward and put out the draft information that we had before us to the residents for their 45-day protest feedback and to bring it back to council for public hearing, correct?
Correct.
This is not the actual rate increase?
Good.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I could ask one, one final question. As we're going through this, this period, the 45-day period, I, I was wondering if we could look a little closer at the, the 25% discount? And it came up that that comes from penalties, late penalties. But I remember hearing in the subcommittee meeting that if we go to the, putting the sewer tax on the tax rules, the county would then get any penalties, any late penalties associated with that. So there's a potential loss in that in compul, so I wanted to know what that impact might look like based on historical late fees and if we can still adequately fund that 25%. I was really moved by what the council member, or Vice Mayor Ibera said about really looking at the real impact to the customers. And I know we can get very technical in these things and that's a factor that unfortunately we didn't really look at.
That information can be provided.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Action?
I'll introduce the resolution for adoption. Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Adam 10B is adopt a resolution approving property owner notice and protest process for 2012, 2013 garbage rate increase proposed by Recology San Bruno.
Step right up.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, my presentation this evening is to provide an overview of the revised 2012-13 garbage rate adjustment proposals provided by our franchise garbage provider, Recology San Bruno. Just to provide an overview, this item was brought forward at the meeting on February 28th. At that meeting, I presented to you the rate adjustment proposal. To recap that conversation, Recology is entitled to an interim rate adjustment this year. That interim year rate adjustment is calculated at 80% of a CPI adjustment for SF Bay Area wage earners and adds to it any allowable pass-through disposal fees. So the interim year adjustment for the current year is at 2.341%. In addition, at the request of the city, Recology provided a supplemental proposal for an organics program in San Bruno due to increasing interest from our residential and commercial customers. The cost to initiate that organics program resulted in a 9.37% increase and that implementation would be a citywide rollout on July 1st, 2012. However, after the February 28th, 2012 meeting, at which the city council indicated their interest in notifying property owners of a rate increase that included the organics program, some issues arose that made the implementation of the organics program on July 1st impossible. Primarily, the lead time necessary to secure the three new vehicles that are needed to offer the organics program is approximately nine months. So that was the biggest issue. And in addition, it is recommended that the amount of time necessary to conduct the proper outreach and education about an organics program to our customers should be increased to ensure adequate, a successful implementation and adequate education. To accommodate these issues, Recology provided a revised rate adjustment proposal that would initiate the organics program, the raw of the organics program on January 1st, 2013. So that adjustment proposal includes still the interim year adjustment that does not change, that 2.341% increase does not change. However, that supplemental proposal essentially takes that 9.37% increase that is needed to implement the organics program and spreads that out over two rate years. So for this year, due to the implementation date being in January, or the proposed implementation date being in January, half the increase would be paid in the 2012-13 rate increase of 4.69%. And then it assumes to have the organics program continue into next year, that remaining 4.68% increase would also need to be implemented in 2013, 14. In addition, there is a new, we would also have to implement a new rate structure for commercial and multifamily residential customers. Essentially, customers, the commercial and multifamily customers pay a rate for garbage that is equivalent to the, it's based on the size of container that they use as well as the frequency of their service. If a commercial or multifamily customer decided to participate in the organics program, they could, because they are now able to reduce, to separate their garbage and their organics, they could essentially possibly reduce the size of their garbage container and reduce the cost of that garbage service. So the proposed rate structure to charge for the organics program for those customers is set at a proposed rate of 75% of the cost of the garbage service. And that is a rate structure that has been implemented in some neighboring agencies. This next slide just highlights the information that was included in the agenda packet and shows the 30, the rate of the 32 gallon, which is the most common container size for residential customers. The rate today is 23.78. The, the interim rate adjustment increase of 2.341% results in a 56 cent increase, brings the rate to 24.34. And if the additional supplemental proposal for the organics program, the revised proposal of 4.69% is implemented, that results in a total increase of $1.70. So essentially, there are two, given these new considerations that have been presented to you this evening, council is being asked to approve a new revised, new resolution that would authorize staff to proceed with mailing the property owner notice based on this revised rate proposal. There are two options available for this rate increase mailing. The first would be the proposed increase, that's been the revised proposal that's before you tonight, of 7.14%, which includes the interim year adjustment of 2.341% as well as the organics program to begin on January 1st, 2013, the 4.69%. The second option available is to proceed with notifying property owners of the proposed interim year adjustment of 2.341% only and direct staff to work with Recology on a future implementation of the organics program. And another strategy that could be considered, we've discussed at this point, is citywide rollout to residential and commercial customers at the same time. We could consider doing a phased-in rollout where we begin with a rollout to commercial customers and then later to commercial, or residential customers. And also to begin working on education and public outreach program to better inform the customer base about this future program. So that concludes my presentation for the evening. Recology General Manager Kristin Kinoki is also here to answer any questions that you might have about this revised rate proposal.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. Regarding commercial and multifamily, in the staff report, it says they're interested in participating. I'll get back to that, but regardless of whether they're interested or not, is the rate increase for organics included in their rates also?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So my question now is, why are, why do they get the option of participating or not? Why doesn't, you know, because residents don't get the option of participating. They have, they're, they're paying the rates and everything, so why, why don't we mandate that everyone participates?
Well, essentially, this proposal does mandate the program in that the rate increase is applied across the board to both commercial rates and residential rates. For those commercial customers and multifamily customers, there is an additional rate structure necessary that, for them to pay an additional amount.
Oh, okay, all right.
To participate in the organics program.
So it's their choice? Yeah, they, they can improve their rates or they can reduce their rates if they actually do participate, you know, but they're still paying, paying for, helping pay for the program?
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Irene?
Okay. Thank you. When you say citywide, are you including government offices, city, city offices and schools?
Yes. Every, everybody who is currently charged as a commercial customer whose rates are based in that proposal would be included. Those rate increases would also see those. Those rate increases would also see those rate increases.
Okay, so with the schools, which I would think would produce probably the most volume of compostable materials, are they going to have a special encouragement or do they need to be directed to do this or do they just pay the increased rate and ignore it? What happens and what can we do?
Well, that's a policy decision that if you, if there was a decision to decide to make an incentive program for schools or certain types of entities to participate in the program, a rate structure could be adopted or to reflect that type of program. But that's not included in the rate proposal that's before you tonight.
So, so if the, if the goal of this is to reduce our landfill and to, you know, to reduce what we put in the landfill, and even though we increase the rates, if we don't require special people or organizations that produce a lot of compostable material, nothing much may happen. I mean, what, what has Recology done in the past to ensure that things happen if you just don't? I've heard several people say, well, I don't care, I'm going to, I'll pay whatever I need to pay, but I'm not going to compost. So if the goal is to get less landfill, what are we going to do about it? And what can we do about it?
Kirsten?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. There's a lot that Recology can do within public outreach and with our waste zero specialists going out and educating those entities such as schools and multifamilies to encourage. Without a mandate in place, we can't make them subscribe to organics or even recycling for that matter, but we can educate them to the fullest extent within our power. We can't, without a mandate in place, we can't make them do it. What we can do is we perform waste audits on some of those entities and kind of show them in photographs and layouts that this is what's in your garbage and this is what the portion that can actually be diverted out of the landfill and go and be processed as organics or be recyclable material. So we can just kind of present it to them in a way to show them, this is what you're doing. You're putting all this into the landfill and all this can be diverted.
Okay. Thank you.
To the Chair, thank you. I wanted to, to suggest to the council that we defer the organics program and do a little more research, and I try to do some research on my own, just focusing on, on the real benefit. And from what I read, studies they've done in other cities, the tangible benefit from doing this is a reduction in methane gas that's released into the atmosphere. So if you take these things, if you recycle them rather than just dump them out there, you somehow reduce methane gas. But that's also offset by the amount of carbon that's produced by the trucks that you put on the road to collect the garbage. And so what I'm curious and, and what we might be able to gather more information on is if, if we were to find out the real interest from the residents on who would participate and what they would estimate the volume of that would be, then we could come up with a methane number perhaps that we could compare against putting three trucks that would be circling the city every week. That's double what we have right now for the yard waste trucks. So we'd have twice as many making their rounds. And we don't know what people will put into this organics bucket, but we do know that these trucks are going to be producing a set amount of carbon every week in the city, in our neighborhoods and also contributing to little traffic jams in the morning when you have to wait to get around them. So I would just make the recommendation that we maybe do a little more research, understand what the, what the real benefit is because, I mean, we know there's a cost, we know there's a negative environmental impact. And just, I'd like to know a little bit more about what the positive is before we, we introduce that.
Good evening, councilmembers. Jacqueline Mondroy, I reside in Pacifica, but I'm a student in Skyline College. And at the moment, we have an environmental science class service, learning, learning service in that class, and we're trying to do a project, we're trying to do a project on how to improve our community and our school. And I'm doing on compost, organic. And I talked to Richard Iniguchi, which is the maintenance supervisor, and he's been trying to push this for our school, you know, trying to get compost because we do need it. There's a lot of food waste and all this stuff, which goes, I could actually go to compost instead of going to landfills. And like, she said that they give us that audit, they give us the audits on how much trash and garbage or waste has been done by the last year. And we do believe that we can actually put a small program or a small compost and show them and teach the children, the students on compost. And there's a lot of people that are involved and want to be involved on teaching the community on how to do it. And I do believe that this is a very big step for trying to lessen the impact on our world, basically. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirsten, question. I know Recology has rolled out organics in a number of other cities. Have you done any research? Do you have the types of numbers for those other cities regarding, you know, carbon infiltration versus methane gas and those types of things?
No.
Okay. I know I, at the subcommittee level, I was the one that said, hey, what's the story with organics? Let's get rolling. I know Michael had a little bit of problem with it and more simply because of the economy and the charge at that point in time. But I do have to agree with him, at this point in time, I think it's too premature to set this in motion from, first of all, a cost standpoint, because I heard a lot of grief the last couple of weeks. But also from a practical standpoint, I think there has to be a cost and a, and a benefit for that cost. And I think we need a little more research. So how we go about that, I'm not quite sure, but I'd sure like to see some questions out there, some research done and some results presented to the council so that we have a real, at least a much, much better understanding of, of, you know, the cost versus the benefit of what, you know, what we were about to do.
We can do that.
To the Chair. I, at the last meeting too, voted no, along with Councilmember Salazar for the economics and the concern of what I didn't even know until, you know, subsequently the water and waste and adding this. I think it's an important program. I'm not trying to underscore that. I just feel, and again, I couldn't have said it as well as you did, councilmember, but as far as the information that you're requesting, it's not that it's not important, it's just, and I know we are going to pay the rates up here, and Councilmember O'Connell will say that, we're all going to pay the rates, but I'm not worried about us right up here, I'm worried about those folks in our community, the ability to pay all these rate increases. That's what I'm worried about. So I also would opt for option two, which is the two point three four one percent only. And my comments from last meeting on this are for the same reason.
Any comments?
To the Chair?
Irene?
Kirsten, would it be possible, and you probably, I don't know if you can answer it right now, but maybe working with Skyline College and some of the other schools, start a type of pilot program where they can compost and maybe just take that and add it to another cities, you know, so you don't need another truck for here, you know, deposit it with Burlingame's or Millbury's or something so that, and I hate leaving Skyline College out when there, there's an interest and some good education that can happen. So maybe there's something that we can do in the interim if, if we don't do citywide composting right now. And I really would like us to, maybe we can do a survey or something in the next focus or online or some kind of public outreach on who exactly is interested in doing this and how, how it would benefit everyone as well as educating. And I really think we need to get the schools on board. They're, they're such a massive producer of compostable materials that we really need to get them going. So those are my comments.
And I'm just going to chime in, I want to be the salesperson for this also. And I voted yes because I wanted to be a better environmentalist and, and I know it's coming and I, and I know it's the right thing. But I think it's, I know, I know we can't put the cart, it's not necessarily the cart before the horse, but I don't, I don't know what it all entails. And, I mean, you can show me a video and show, you know, this is what, this is what the good thing about organics is and this is what communities are doing and how it helps, and that'll go a long way. And I think, not putting it off for years, but, you know, maybe we, you know, do, you know, a six months to a year of, of education, you know, and get, and get the community involved and get them on track so that we don't have to take the calls and saying, what is this all about? So I think it's prudent.
Okay. Any more discussion or action by the council?
If there's any other questions, I'd like to, I'll introduce the resolution with option B.
Can I just quickly, sorry, one thing I forgot to mention. So option two, the proposed resolution that was included in the packet, some changes would be made for option two. So there's two, two references to the initiation of the organics program and the creation of the new rate structure. Those would be removed from the resolution and a reference to the prior, the council's interest at the prior, the February twenty-eighth meeting would also be added just for the record.
Okay, that, that sounds good. So with, with those conditions, I again introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Adam ten C received a report on production of video documentary on the September ninth, two thousand and ten, explosion and the continuing recovery of the San Bruno community, and adopt a resolution authorizing production costs to be covered through the city trust fund. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This report will be delivered only in oral form as there is no report included in the packet this evening. And I'll be asking for your, this will be primarily an informational report tonight. I'll be asking for your guidance and direction about pursuing what staff is recommending to you as a very exciting project opportunity to continue our efforts to document and to learn from and demonstrate the resilience of the San Bruno community in the wake of the tragic September ninth, two thousand and ten events in our community. Specifically, the mayor and I were approached a few months ago about a, an opportunity to, in conjunction with a, an award that is, a situation where the mayor is, is being recognized as representative of the city by the, an organization called the Peninsula Coalition. The Coalition provides an annual recognition for a couple of individuals within the county who have demonstrated exceptional leadership. And in this case, the mayor has agreed to accept the war, the award as the representative of the city council and the city of San Bruno, recognizing the tremendous leadership effort that has been provided by the entire city council. In conjunction with that award program, the current president of the Peninsula Coalition, who is a renowned, at least in our county, videographer, particularly a documentary, documentary videographer, typically produces a short video, fifteen minutes or so, as part of the award ceremony about the awardee. It was his intent to provide, to do that and to feature Mayor Ruane and the city of San Bruno for the upcoming awards presentation, which is later this spring. In conversation with Mr. Rubin, the videographer, we identified an opportunity, as I indicated before, to continue our efforts to commemorate and to document and to provide an opportunity for others to be informed and to learn about and through the experience that is San Bruno's in the, in the wake of the disaster by producing a full-length documentary in a high-quality professional manner that could be available for dissemination to media channels such as PBS, but certainly of a quality that would be usable by our city and by others long into the future to, again, to learn from and understand a bit about not just what happened here and not just about a big explosion and fire, but more about this community's response, this community's resilience and this community's recovery, which is a process that, as the city council is very well aware, is continuing and will be in process probably for some years to come. I'm presenting this project to you tonight because there is a, a cost associated with the production of a video that I am recommending to you be a, an item that we consider to be funded via the trust fund that has been established through the joint effort of the city of San Bruno and PG&E as part of our activities associated with and responding to the events of September ninth, two thousand and ten. At this point, I do not have, we're still in process of developing a firm cost proposal, but it is, the preliminary information is that that project would incur a cost of approximately or perhaps up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This would be a very, as I'm sure that number suggests to you, a very substantial project and it would be one, again, that would be intended to provide a professional quality, network quality documentary production of a length of approximately an hour perhaps, perhaps a bit more. The more immediate issue is the action that I have already taken, and I want to advise you of that, and that is to provide a initial twenty thousand dollar commitment to the videographer under my expenditure authority in order to produce the short and to give us an opportunity to further evaluate the project and to proceed, if we wish, to a larger, comprehensive, longer-term and detailed project. So with that information, I am requesting your authority to proceed in discussion with the videographer, to bring you back a more detailed budget at a later time and to proceed with the commitment for the minor amount, or small amount of, of initial funding that will allow the production of the short video and give us an opportunity to see the quality and to determine how we want to proceed further.
Do you want to, an action this evening?
I'm looking for your consensus. I don't need a specific action and/or your questions and comments.
I just have a question, and I can't judge who this videographer is, I know the name and everything. So initially, you said that, and I was just speaking with the mayor earlier before the meeting about the, the awards dinner on, with the Peninsula Coalition. Is that something that they normally do, you know, is provide us a short video? And does the awardee pay for it?
Typically, the videographer does fundraising in order to produce the short video and, or at least that's my understanding. I have, I have no direct experience with this, with this program. And I believe that that is a significant effort by itself to raise sufficient funds in order to be able to produce information that is, that is usable for the, for the video.
And so are you, are you saying that we're going to get a flavor of what this, this videographer does for this short video and then he'll proceed into the longer documentary? Or are we, are we committed to this video? Or are we, are we committed to this videographer? For the, for the-
He will have dedicated substantial time and resources to the production of the short video, but it is an opportunity for us to take a look and to determine how we want to proceed and whether we want to proceed with a longer, more detailed project.
Okay. I think I'm correct in adding that we're not paying for this whole thing. I mean, this is only a portion of it, which we, which we thought would be appropriate to pay from the trust fund. There would be other entities and sponsors paying for this also. So do we have a consensus? Any other questions?
To the Chair.
Michael?
Something that kind of keeps coming up when we, when we talk about taking money from the trust fund, is that whether, you know, there are some guidelines in terms of what are appropriate expenditures from this. And this is certainly a noble effort, but I'm wondering, I mean, this does not, I mean, this is kind of on the extreme end of repairing the neighborhood, which is like the broad umbrella of what those funds are for.
Let me, let me first of all respond, because I am very well aware in your comments previously, and our commitment to you has not been forgotten. And that is that the city council has requested an advance view and, in my mind, for the coming year, a budget for anticipated expenditures from the trust fund. That said, the trust fund is intended for a wide variety of operating, capital, repair, and rehabilitation, recovery types of efforts that do indeed go well beyond the physical rebuilding of the neighborhood. So that, I think it's, it's fair and reasonable that you are reminding us that the council is very interested in, and shall be provided with a more detailed and comprehensive look. I would have to admit and acknowledge to you that it is, in fact, continuing to be a rapidly and ever-evolving situation. And it has been very difficult to anticipate what kinds of costs are likely to, what kinds of issues are going to need to be addressed, and therefore, what kinds of costs are going to be incurred in that process. But we certainly are, are, have not forgotten and are working on providing you with that bigger-picture perspective.
Okay. All right. Everybody give a nod?
Nod.
Nod.
Thank you.
You got it. Reports of commissions, boards, and committees, there aren't any this evening. Comments from council members? Anything? All right. We have planned to close session. I know Mark's going to be very disappointed, but considering the hour, we're going to hold off on this again, especially considering, if it's all right with you, you know, the extraordinary amount of time you put in the last two weeks to get the PG&E situation and agreement settled. So everybody's a little heavy-eyed, if you will. But we're going to do it, we'll try for the next meeting, all right? We maybe don't have garbage and sewer and water things to occupy a lot of our time, so we'll see. But anyway, if that's all right with you. Prior, excuse me. Prior to a German, I would like to close the meeting this evening with a moment of silence in memory of Maurice, or Maury, Hamilton, who passed away on February 22nd, 2012. Maury served as mayor of San Bruno, three terms, and councilmember, two terms, from 1960 to 1972. He practiced law here in San Bruno and went on to be the city attorney of San Mateo. He also served on many state and Bay Area boards and committees. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Until the next council meeting, March 27th, right here at the senior center.